More.
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Krafcheck? Mr. Parsick?
Here.
Mr. Levens?
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Kit McCanney Herald on January 4th, 2019. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll get started with today's work session with public safety.
Okay, municipal court.
Good afternoon. My big news, I'm interviewing. So, I reached out to the VOTAC and they've sent someone over and I'm leaving here to go talk with her, see if she's interested. And other than that, we're getting ready for summer. First parking ticket complaint today, so.
Off and running.
Off and running. Anybody have any questions?
Good luck with your interview.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Fire department. Hi, Roger.
A short report. Thirteen calls for the fire calls for the month with twenty-eight EMS calls. During the month, we had one building fire, one medical assist, three natural gas leaks, one arcing wires, one cover assignment, and six fire alarms. And that's my report.
Fun. Nice job. An Easter egg hunt?
Yeah, it was. That was nice. It was nice.
And a picture at the shelter, too.
Well attended.
Roger?
Yes.
Very well done.
At the last meeting, Lou Schwecker gave me this, this little piece of paper about the SOS on nine eleven calls. Do you know anything about that system?
SOS?
Where it can pinpoint where the caller is at when you make the phone call to EMS or...
From what I understand, the county is getting that or has that system.
Okay.
With your cellphone technology, that's part of the new, there's a name for it, next gen nine-on-one. I think that county has that system. So they actually, because right now, the way they track your phone is by the cell tower, which doesn't really help.
It's going to...
This will be able to...
The actual phone?
Yeah, no, your phone.
Wow.
If you have it with you.
So is that, so we have to switch over to, that will take effect here when we switch over to the county?
Yeah, it's typically, it's, I don't think there's anything to do. It's just going to be a matter of the county's either has it or they're, I know they're, they've talked about it, so. So when it happens, your phone will just be pinpointed on the map, so.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chief. Hello.
The monthly report for the police department for March. There were one hundred and six motor vehicle stops and one adult was arrested. An update on personnel. We have three SLE O twos that, SLE O twos that will graduate the winter time police academy next week and that will begin work right away. We have seven Class II applicants that will begin the police academy training at the end of the month with an expected graduation of late June. We are currently in the process of hiring Class One parking enforcement. We also are going through the tech, great program. First time, I think, that we've ever done it before, so hopefully that pans out okay. Both officers, full-time officers that were away from military training for the past couple of weeks and months have returned to duty. And we have begun a selection process to replace the full-time officer that left recently. We actually have interviews on this Friday. In terms of the building, the completion of Phase Two of the building is very close. The tile flooring is being installed as we speak, and we should begin the process of moving things in, shelving units, tables, things like that, hopefully sometime next week, maybe as early as Monday. So that's pretty much it.
Do we know when that road's going to be paved?
Ninety-fifth?
The one hundred block?
The one hundred block, I believe it's two in a week and a half.
Okay.
Week and a half. They, they were originally going to start that end and work this way, but because they have issues with the curbing on that end, they're going to be doing it here. So they had a couple of connections that they had to make near our building here. Once that's complete, then they were scheduled to start the paving.
Okay. And Jenny told me that invitations were sent out for the ribbon cutting and for, were sent, so we're getting there.
Mm-hmm.
A month away. Yeah.
Yeah, almost to the deck.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's exciting. It'll go quick.
Good.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Okay. Lifeguards, Sandy?
Good afternoon. Most of the equipment is ordered, uniforms, things like that. I'm in the process of hiring the beach taggers. And Public Works is making the headquarters look nice. They're doing a lot of work over there. It definitely has improved it a lot. We do not have that many lifeguard applications yet. It is still early, but there are only maybe a half dozen applications. So I'm a little concerned about that, but it, it's still April. So it's just, once it starts to get warm, people think about it. But for now, there aren't very many. And that's my report.
How about taggers?
Enough, but not overwhelming.
So you would still take more at this point?
Maybe a few more.
Okay.
But the, historically, we would have a phone book pile of tagger applications. And there were, there were always plenty of them, but not, not so much with the lifeguards.
Okay.
How many positions?
We can do a push on social media.
There are sixty-five positions. We usually have about, I'd say, a twenty percent turnover rate, sometimes less, sometimes more. But I'm sure there are at least, at least fifteen positions that we would, would be new people. And we probably only have, I'd say, five applications at this point. But it's early.
Thank you.
It is early. Thank you.
We'll put something out on our Facebook and on the website, just reminding people that we're accepting applications.
Okay. And I wanted to get Roger before we left and just to remind these guys of the beach opening noon on Saturday, Memorial Day weekend. You'll have your competition of first responders again, police versus fire versus lifeguards. But this year, the police, I'm thinking, full, you're on notice, you can't use six guys, four. Count to four, Tom. It's all you get. So it'll be a whole new set of challenges, too. So don't think you can practice what you did last year, all new challenges.
Oh, yeah.
You reminded me, I feel like the fire company got robbed last year, lifeguards. Half of our age. There needs to be some sort of curve this year, Sandy.
Need a handicap?
I just like that stellar performance by the six police officers.
I'm sure, I'm sure Minna still has nightmares about that. Okay. Not a whole lot to report on. I participated in an exercise along with county at the state level, an E-teams exercise, just to, it was a simulated wind event, just resource requests, some online stuff that I had to do. Also, we did hear back about the storm ready. It is a work in progress. We have found an alternative thing. We're working with Marty Palugi at the county level. But we should be receiving something from them in the near future concerning that, the storm ready program, which helps us with our community rating. Mount Holly is not doing it anymore as a collateral. It sounds like national, I spoke with one of the forecasters up there, it sounds like they're doing away with it on a local level and they're going to be going to it on a county level. So we are working with county and get, and securing that. Not sure what it's going to look like at this point, what form it's going to be in, but it should help us with the community rating system. So, and that's all I have.
And that's it? That's it? Rec and tourism, recreation?
Hi, guys. How are you?
Good.
All right, so our new website, I don't know if anybody got a chance to look at it, officially launched April eighth. It looks great. We've gotten tons of positive feedback from people so far. As of this morning, we've been working tirelessly to replace all the wind screens that were blown down after yesterday's wind, or called a storm at this point, with the way that the winds were. Usually with the wind, with the wind screens, we put heavy-duty zip ties on the bottom, so that when hi, high winds come, only the top releases, so we don't have to replace the grommets and the actual wind screen. We're just replacing the zip ties. So I've been holding the ladder while Tim applies the zip ties this morning. The tennis, I got confirmation that tennis, pickleball, basketball, and shuffleball courts are to be resurfaced for the 2019 season, and all work will be complete by June 12th. So all those cracks and blemishes that have been coming to surface will be fixed by then. You hit upon it. We met and talked in more detail about the beach ceremony, the opening activities scheduled for May 25th. The summer programming is underway and the new schedule is posted on the website, as far as what we offer at the rec for our free classes. Registration is now open for the pickleball tournament. I can't tell you how many emails I've gotten asking when that's going to be open. So we actually opened it about twenty days earlier than we did last year, just from the people that are wanting to get their summer plans in order. So I sat in on a, you know, rec desk, which is our software that we use, and we were able to get that going a little bit earlier. And then I know that some people have commented about T-shirts and they want the sizes that they order online. So it was great to open registration early and then close it a little bit sooner so we can order the T-shirts, the sizes that they ordered true to the participation. So hopefully that runs seamlessly. And then we also have the registration for spring youth tennis clinics that go on Ninety-Sixth Street. It's every Friday. So I've contacted with Ms. Murtagh and they have it out to their elementary school. So that's up and running. We're in the process of entering all the camps and clinics, so that we'll be set to open everything on May first for property owners. They can register for the camps and clinics, and then non-property owners can register on May 24th. All the summer family fun night entertainment is confirmed and scheduled, and that will be posted on our website. As far as every Monday night at the firehouse, we do the family fun night. So we have everything situated for every single Monday coming. Moving forward, we're starting to focus on Fourth of July activities, which is like crazy to think about. And then finally, we're going to finalize the summer staff list. Like I said, we only have two people not returning, so that wasn't a difficult task to work on the schedule. But getting their availability now...
So all your positions are filled for the summer?
They are. We've got plenty of applications. We are actually accepting, we do usually accept volunteers, as far as they're usually, you know, fifteen years old and they want to, you know, get their feet wet, as far as they went through the basketball program and they want to start helping out with like the clinics and stuff. So there was two volunteers in the past, and they are actually picking up office hours now, so we can turn them over and pay them. That's it.
Good. Okay. Anybody else have anything?
Tourism?
Hi, Judy mentioned the dedication ceremony for the police department building. Working on that. The formal invitations did go out to former officers and families and police chiefs in all the other municipalities. I am starting to get the RSVPs back as well. So I will forward that list to you, so you, just to make sure we didn't leave anybody out, yeah. The tourism department, we're intending to apply for a cooperative marketing grant from the state in cooperation with the Chamber of Commerce. We do that with them. They've been denied the grant the last few years, so working on a strategy with them, so fingers crossed. I'm going to attend their board of directors meeting this week, so maybe we can get a little further with it.
That's been a couple of years, right, since we got that?
Yeah, at least three, I think.
That's okay.
The, right now, I'm in the middle of Arts and Crafts Festival, working on this different, the site assignments. We've got one hundred and fifty-one returning vendors, and I have about almost seventy new vendors that are applying this year, so working on that. The farmers market is going to start Sunday, Memorial Day weekend. We do have twenty-eight vendors confirmed that are coming back. I am waiting on confirmation from four more, that we do have three that might not be coming back. So we, there's, I have two people kind of on a waiting list, but, so I might still have room for one additional. I wanted to just kind of put it out for discussion, that film shoot that I think it's in your package for approval for the regular meeting. I did get the application back, you know, from the different departments, and it was denied by Public Works, Safety, the administrator. The police didn't approve or deny, just because they need more information from him. We had, I did notify him that it had been denied by those other departments already. He did send me an email back and asked that I kind of appeal to the group, so it's in your hands. He's been a visitor to Stone Harbor for about twenty-five years. He doesn't feel like he's asking for a whole lot from the borough, but it is the one that coincides with the Spring Tide Festival.
So he's not, he didn't say anything about changing the date? He wants to stick with that same date?
Yeah, he wants to stick with the date. It's the fourth and the fifth, so the festival's on the, on the fourth. He's talking about using some streets further south in towns. He didn't give us exact street numbers, but he feels he's not really asking for a whole lot, but, you know, it's, it's in your hands. It is, it is a busy weekend. And there is, I did tell him, you know, there's, on top of the busy weekend, you know, we've got a lot of streets that they're working on, and typically, we have to have somebody from the borough at the film shoot as well. So it's...
Which will be different.
Kind of spreading ourselves a little thin. But I just, you know, I wanted to put it out there for, you know, discussion with you guys.
I think, I think we have to be careful with this, with this one. You know, it's not a very big, big production.
No, no, it's, I mean, it is a short film. I think it's talking like fifteen people on his crew. I mean, the last film shoot we had was five people. Was, you know, pretty, I don't think anyone even realized they were in town. You know, this one, he's looking for, you know, a couple of street closures.
But aren't they well away, well...
Like one hundred fourteen, one hundred seventeen, like down that...
Right. So they shouldn't really interfere with Ninety-Sixth Street.
Are they in front of people's properties?
If, no, not the, where he wants the closure. He does, if he's going to go in front of someone's property, he has to get their permission, in which he has, he said he, he has permission from somebody to shoot at their home, but that's private property. I don't think we...
So, do you know off the top of your head what streets he wants closed?
He, well, he gave us, it's possibly...
No.
Hold on.
Mantour, we do, no.
He didn't pin them down, but it's, he wants one hundred eleventh street between First and the beach. His alternate is one hundred and eighth street between First and the beach, and one hundred and twentieth between Second and Third, if that's possible. And then one hundred and seventeenth street between Second and Third, one hundred and sixteenth between Second and the beach.
That's a lot. That's a lot of, that's a lot.
Yeah.
All of them, or?
It's, it's, that's...
Six streets? In the same day?
That's on the fifth. But no, it doesn't have to be all six. I think it's really, they're, his, his choices, I think maybe two of them, but it's, it's up to...
So they're the choices, and he's looking to close two?
Yeah, they should, they should, but they're just the choices that he had. On the fourth, he's looking for one hundred and fourteenth street and Paradise Drive.
Does it have to be on a weekend?
That, I mean, that's...
That, I mean, to me, I don't think it's fair to the people in town.
It's a tough weekend, I think, just because, you know, we are, we're busy. The, so it's, yeah, Saturday, Sunday. That's, because they have kids. There's kids in the film. They're on their, they're teenagers, so I guess that's why it has to be the weekend, because they're in school.
Hmm. Anybody have any thoughts?
Yeah, I, I think it's a lot to ask of the traffic that might be around that weekend. If it was during the week, I would think differently about it. I mean, if I came down, my first time down, and it's something like when you said one hundred and eleventh street...
And for how long, too? What hours is he looking for?
I think we just need some additional detail.
The hours really probably, it could be anywhere between eight AM and seven PM, so...
So anywhere in between then, but for how long? Does he want three hours? Does he need...
He didn't really give us that information, so that we don't know. I would imagine he needs a, you know, a few hours at each location. But it is, I mean, I did tell him where, where, you know, you picked a weekend where there's, you know, something going on, and you just, you know, kind of gearing up for the season. So things, we're just spreading our, I think, you know, I just think we're spreading ourselves a little thin.
Anybody else?
I don't know if he, his parents were down, I think, over the weekend, so I don't know if they approached anyone, I believe.
No, I haven't heard from anybody.
Because he said that he was going to have, see if they could, if they knew someone, they might approach them, so just want to give you...
What was Public Works' objection? Do you recall the date, or he, he didn't say?
Public Works? I have the application, hold on. It is, I think he just put he denied, no, he just, he just denied.
Doesn't say why?
No. The police just needed, the police wanted more information, just because I think, you know, he didn't really give us enough.
Oh, okay. May fourth and fifth.
Everybody's thinking was because of the fact that of, of the Spring Tide Festival and, and the amount of traffic in town. That was, it's pretty much why we opposed it and...
And borough resources are all going to be fed into the two hundred block as far as Public Works and Ops.
We had asked if there was a way that he could change it to a different date. That's kind of where we all left at with them.
Yeah, I mean, you're going to have traffic that's already being, you know, rerouted around Ninety-Sixth Street, so, and I, you know, just, you might have a little confusion.
It's just, well, resources are one thing, but Chief, you, you just want to know more about this? Because he's really not requesting the film in the Ninety-Sixth Street area.
No, no.
I mean, he's pretty far away from where the boat festival or Spring Tide's going to be.
But I guess it would be, if they're doing road closures, your guys would need to be there, correct? Depending.
Because, yeah, I wasn't thinking that, but you're right. It would require the posting of the no parking signs as well, and that would have to be done twenty-four hours in advance. And then Public Works would have to be bringing down whatever equipment they do to shut down a street. And then in the meantime, all that has to be done for the Spring Tide Festival as it is. So asking him for a different date, I don't know that that's, that cumbersome. It's not saying no, it's saying, give us another day.
Is he making an offer to reimburse the borough for any expenses?
No. No, I mean, we would charge him just an event fee for, if, if we're providing, which is what, two hundred and fifty dollars?
So I think you...
Per day. Per day. So, I mean, so they're...
Right.
I think we, you, like, we said here...
I mean, we can ask him for another date.
Ask him for, to provide more details about these road closures and times, and then encourage him to, you know, give us, give us another date. I don't know what else to say.
Yeah, right.
I'm going to go with that.
What were you going to say, Josie?
With respect, he, if he's in this area, has been to our hometown here, he knows what weekends are like. I just don't think this is fair to somebody coming down and having possibly an inconvenience of that sort for the weekend that they're coming down to probably have fun. So I just think if it could be, other than a weekend...
And Josie thinks that may be Big Trash Weekend, so that...
It's not. I looked, it's not bulk trash. I thought it was bulk trash weekend. No. But that's coming up.
No, I can certainly, I can certainly ask him to give us, you know, I asked him for as many details as he could give us. I think he felt that he gave us all those alternatives, almost it was like too much. He should have just said, I want this street.
At what time?
Yeah.
And for how long?
Our problem is we don't meet again until...
And we, we don't meet in between now and the fourth and fifth of May, so, I mean, he doesn't, the only thing you can do is come back the first meeting in May with a different date to be approved, because now we don't meet again prior to that.
Yeah, we won't meet before, yeah. I mean, we could do, and if he could do something during the week would be more ideal.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, right?
I think, that's my two cents.
Okay.
That's about it. That's all I have, two cents.
I can leave it at, I mean, I can contact him and...
Okay.
Go from the, and just kind of push it to the next meeting. Other than that, our, we have our borough Facebook that we are trying to use to, to promote just events from the borough and the chamber as well. And I just wanted to let all of you know, like, feel free to go on there and share whatever we have there. I mean, not, not that I want you to turn it into your personal Facebook page, but, but the more you can share, the more likes we can get. We have four hundred and fifty active, pretty active followers. But somebody like, you know, when we share it with like the Property Owners Association and they share something, that goes to, you know, another, you know, few thousand people. So it is helpful for us, for anyone to, to, you know, feel free to share that stuff. We don't, you can't, the pub, the general public can't just come out, posts on our page, but they can comment on our posts. But I haven't had really much of that, so, which is ideal, actually. That's everything I have.
Yeah.
All right.
Jenny, have there been any plans made for the employee picnic yet?
No.
Not yet. We'll work.
Something I have.
Okay.
And what's that usually, the Friday before Memorial Day weekend, or the week?
It's mid-May, usually.
Was it Friday of, it wasn't Friday of Memorial Day weekend, was it?
No. No. I think it may have been the week before. But that's next up, to work on that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Natural Resources, Lenore?
Lenore is first, please. Good afternoon, everyone. Hello. Yay for spring. Yes. Without the wind would be really nice. It was an eventful day at the institute and the whole building was moving. Anyway, a couple of things on Stone Harbor Bird Sanctuary. Yegud Espy Trail has been seasonally closed as of March first. That's in accordance with the management plan to try to not have disturbance to birds that might be up in that area. Public Works is reviewing the entrance area of Yegud Espy to determine if some limbs need to be removed for trail safety. The, that's the area where the black pines are. Last year, you may remember, we, one of the big black pines died back in there and was removed. Looks, I sent a note out, there's some, there's some limbs, I think, that we're going to want to take down. They're just kind of dead, and you get windstorms like that and stuff. It could be, could provide a, a safety issue. So they're usually really good at that, so I'm sure they'll be out checking on that as well. Wettland Institute is accepted for environmental education interns for the season, and the interns are the ones that lead the sanctuary tours. Those are the docents for the tours, so those, they're all in place. The tours will start beginning of June and continue throughout the summer on Saturdays and Sundays. I guess it's Saturday for a couple of weeks, and then Saturdays and Sundays leaving on the Yegud Espy Trail. So we really do want to make sure that's in good shape. Many of you know, I'm kind of confused by this, there's a rooster at the sanctuary near the pump house. He's been there for a while. Not sure where he came from, but this isn't the first rooster that's magically appeared in the borough. He really can't be there. I know folks are trying to catch him, trying to catch a rooster. So he's, he seems to me to be actually a tame bird, but then kind of doesn't want anybody around. But folks are feeding him. He really can't be in the sanctuary.
He has a home if he can be caught.
Correct. Yeah.
They just can't get him.
I just can't catch him.
No, he's already, he's got a place lined up if he can get caught. We had a conversation yesterday with somewhat of a game plan.
Yeah. So what I'm, I'm wondering if there's some, I mean, this is what, the third rooster that's appeared in the last... Yeah, so what I'm, I'm wondering if there's some, I mean, this is what, the third rooster that's appeared in the last year?
Yeah, at least two, is it three?
This is the third one.
It is the third one, so I'm just wondering if there's some.
Coming from.
Education that we, I'm, I'm just trying to think this through. It almost, I mean, why are people dropping roosters in?
My guess is it's not people, it's person.
Person.
Well, I'm just wondering if there's some educational messaging that could, I don't know, I'm, I'm just trying to think this through. It's, I mean, it's not fair to that bird either. He didn't look very happy in, you know, in the freezing cold weather. I mean, it's cruelty to the bird as well as everything else, so I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there, it seems kind of weird to me that.
That there's three.
That there's suddenly a dump, a dumping ground for.
Yeah, that is odd.
So I don't really have a suggestion, but I'm thinking we, you know, I don't know if there's something on a website or somewhere to remind people that's cruel. I, I don't know, it's, like I said, it's weird, it's weird to me, you really can't stay in the sanctuary, I know, and they're hard to catch, I get that, you know, and then you got a bunch of
Yeah.
staff running around trying to figure out how to catch a rooster, that's kind of smart.
That's what we have.
Yeah. But as soon as you have some kind of a feeding pattern, that's your, I mean, which there is one, so we were talking about a game plan just yesterday.
We do know when he comes out to eat for a particular individual, so. We are working, we are working on that angle.
Because you're right, he don't belong there, he's unhappy bird. He'd be happier on a farm.
Yeah, well, I'm just wondering if there's some concept of thinking about messaging about that to the public to not have that.
We could, we could put something reminding, reminding people that there are sanctuaries out there that they could.
Yeah, other places for birds, people might, yeah, I, I don't know, like I said, it's just, we were all surprised the first one showed up, right? And they were all like, huh, there's a second one, and I was like, really? A third one? So, anyway, I just throw it out.
Too bad they're not microchipped.
Or you could ask him who's.
Right, we could find out.
He's a beautiful bird and all, but.
Yeah, he is gorgeous.
What are you doing here, man? All right, that was my little digression. Stone Harbor Point, a few things, there's been a lot of coordination with the New Jersey Division of Fish and Wildlife. The point is closed to vehicle traffic as of the 15th, which is standard practice. Symbolic fencing is up, the closure information for the portion where the nesting birds are is, is all closed. The piping plover are in the area and formal nest surveys start this week. Because they were supposed to start yesterday, and no one volunteered to be out there and get sand blasted, but, so they are around and that is starting. The Point Stewards Program is gearing up for the summer. We're in the process of hiring six stewards for the summer duties. They'll be on duty seven days a week from Memorial Day to through Labor Day. We too are noticing a drop off in the number of applicants for most of the positions are out there, so I don't know. Maybe they're waiting for the minimum wage to go up, but we actually pay above minimum wage, but still, it's, it's tricky to hire for some of these positions, so we're in the process of doing that. The rack cards for, with the information on the beach rules for Stone Harbor Point and kind of why it's in that conservation area. We still have those and they're gonna be distributed again with beach tags as we've done for the past couple of years, so we had to talk about that, and they're ready to do that. The folks at the desk have the, have the cards. And the only other thing I ought to talk about is there was a meeting regarding boat landings at the point on March 28th that was attended by law enforcement and others seeking some clarification on the ordinances, which ordinances and how they pertain to boat landings and the use of motorized vessels around the point. This is something that's been talked about here for the last several years. And just some questions about how the ordinances that are targeted to the protected beaches, how they translate or don't translate to Stone Harbor Point. And I think, I think it was a good meeting, I think there was a lot of clarity right away, and it looks like a combination of ordinances effectively limit motorized boats to an area of either 300 feet offshore. And/or they prohibit swimming or boating in area that's not so designated as such an area. And of course, Stone Harbor Point is not a designated swimming beach, so some of those ordinances, they're already in place. I guess the good news is you already have ordinances in place, and it was clarification that should help, prove helpful to law enforcement efforts this summer. They seemed like they were satisfied with the discussion and understood. I believe there was an agreement to try to get the word out, to craft a press release about the ordinances and how they would be, regulations and how they would be enforced. The Division of Fish and Wildlife from New Jersey, the state has agreed to work with the Borough on that language and to co-sign something if you wanted them to do that, to, to get the word out. And also the concept that we might send some letters to the area marinas where folks are launching boats or even renting boats that are coming across and just let them know that A, they're in Stone Harbor Point, which is, I'm not sure everybody knows, and then that, in fact, there are ordinances down there, and we're hopeful that'll help stem the, some of the.
Well, I think the big, the big help at that meeting was we had the prosecutor there, which, we had him read the ordinances and then discuss what, you know.
And it really was two different ordinances and how they interplay with each other, that was, you know, all of us speculating. I thought, I thought it was a very positive meeting, I thought it was very helpful and just really clarified things, and that information has been communicated to the Division of Fish and Wildlife and the conservation officers in terms of how all that does and doesn't mesh together for hopefully a quiet, calm, safe, happy season at Stone Harbor Point. That's all I have, if anyone has any questions, anything else?
Just, um, one, I guess a concern that maybe you can help with is the trapping. And I guess everybody's aware of the snare trap that somebody found at the point. Is there any way that we can regulate what kind of traps are used there? Any way that we can have any input on how this is done moving forward, so something like that doesn't happen again? So snare traps aren't used, maybe traps are monitored, more humane trapping methods are used, something to that effect.
So I can't speak for the, that's the US Fish and Wildlife Service through the, AFIS is the, is the Department of Agriculture. They have what they consider to be standards and tight standards for humanity and, and how those are done.
Right.
So I believe they were following those, those rules there. You do have an agreement with them to work as the landowner on your.
So is there a way that we can maybe have a little more input into how this trapping is actually done? I mean, snare traps aren't exactly humane. And then if we had a member of the public actually come upon it, now whether they belonged where they were, you know, is definitely, you know, they didn't belong wherever they were. However, what was going on, I mean, it's, it's just unfortunate. So I, I would think that we should have some, like you said, as the landowner, we should have some kind of input as to how the trapping is conducted, what methods can be used, should they be monitored at all times? Stuff like that, so we can just make sure it's a more humane approach.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, is that something that we would just go directly to Fish and Wildlife with?
Yeah, I think Mark and I can review our current agreement and see if there's wiggle room in the existing agreement, whether we're able to amend it or just get clarification or even dictate those things, but.
Is it, is it, it's US Fish and Wildlife, correct? It's not the state? It's the federal Fish and Wildlife that does the trapping and they hire a contractor?
No, it's the, it's.
It's them? Okay.
It's, um, this particular one was in fact, was the US Fish and Wildlife Service, but there are times when the state can do so as well with, with their contracted. It's their employees that, that do the work.
That do it, okay.
Federal or state employees.
Yeah.
That do the work, so they don't.
I just think I'd be more comfortable, and I think that a lot of the public would be more comfortable if, you know, if, if we just reviewed it and had some input on what kind of traps are used and so on and so forth.
Okay.
Would be helpful.
Mark and I look at it and then we can set something up with.
Okay.
Anything else? No, but I have something to add to, we have an ordinance for introduction tonight that has to do with the natural conservation area at the point. And this is also about dogs, where we are redefining the wording, which you all have a copy of it. This is for the parking lot south, that no dogs shall be permitted in the Conservation Management District, period. Which makes it very clear that where the gate is and where the parking lot is from there down, dogs are not permitted. So we're gonna clean that ordinance up to make that easy to read. So that is on our agenda.
The ordinance I had before that is about when you can walk your dogs on the beach during the season. I mean, that ordinance states that dogs are never permitted south of 127th Street, comma, the Stone Harbor Point Conservation Area. So I assume 127th Street is that, is that jetty south of the parking lot? Is that where 127th Street would be?
That's the, that's the jetty, that's down the beach.
Okay, so I think, I, I mean, just for my own clarification, I think in the ordinance that Josie's gonna put forward, Mrs. Rich is gonna put forward, we ought to clarify, we ought to state what the conservation area is, because I mean, I don't think, I bet nobody in this room knows what it is. Because it has certain boundaries.
See, they think the challenge, the challenge that comes up, which is why it was in both ordinances, from my recollection of the discussion with the prosecutor, was that the conservation area actually goes from 123rd Street all the way across, but picking up at the jetty is the difference between the front beach. So it was basically trying to allow dogs during the set times that you've designated on the front beach between 123 and 127, but not behind the dunes on 123 or anywhere south of 127. So I think that's why the two.
No, I, I, I got, I remember that from the meeting, but I'm saying in, in the, in the second ordinance, the one prohibiting dog, dogs, whether they're on a leash or not in the conservation area, you should say where, what the conservation area is. That, that's all I'm asking, so that we.
There, I'm, we're only seeing a small portion of that ordinance, I'm not sure if that is defined in the ordinance or not. This section here, we're just amending.
Oh, okay.
Where it just said that they couldn't run loose, but had to be securely leashed, and that was contradictory to what we've already approved other, other areas, so that's why it was amended, so that it's clear and matches the other language.
Okay, yeah, so this is just Section B, so that the definition is in another part of that same ordinance. And that includes the, the, like the tideline, right, the, for the beach down to the water.
So, so the recreation, as my understanding, the recreational beach is a separate, has a separate management agreement and separate rules for the management. And the front beach extends all the way to 127th on whatever you guys define the beach, so in front of, seaward of the dunes to the water or some legal term that defines your beach. So that's what you're discussing with your ordinance. The other ordinance is what happens inside the conservation area, and I think the challenge was the language was just, never got picked up in the conservation area. It just talks about them being leashed versus not actually being there. So all the rest of the signage and everything else about the conservation area corrects it, it was just a, a correction that.
This is just making the zoning ordinance match what our other ordinance says.
Everybody understand that? And then the only other thing was we did have, I do believe that the beach sweep went on this weekend. I stopped by early and saw them, and then I talked to the POA and they would like, well, it's not our job, but to let them know next year when these dates are, we promise to give them the dates in January for the beach sweeps, because there was a little bit of misunderstanding. But the next one is October, I wrote it down and now I can't see it.
It's like the 27th. I don't know, it's late October.
Yeah, so we'll, we will announce it, make sure that they get it. But I.
Yeah, the last Saturday, I think, in October.
Yeah, that's what I think.
October 26th, maybe?
Hold on, 26th of October should be the next beach sweep, which is set by that organization, not us, right? So that's all I have. You have anything, Jill?
Just one other thing. I had a conversation along with Grant and Craig with Chris Constantino from the DEP in reference to the lack of beach replenishment on, for, for Stone Harbor. And they wanted to, wanted to discuss with us some options that we might have because of the fact that we're not gonna have the beach replenishment. And one of the areas that they want to look at, and Craig and Grant agreed with it, was there certain areas where it's been overly successful in building the dunes, where they're actually higher than what they should be, and they've accumulated a lot more sand, and we've actually started receiving complaints from property owners that it's getting so high that it's affecting their views. So we were gonna look at those areas and they were going, I asked them to reach back out to Army Corps and say, okay, well, we're not taking sand from the CBRA area, why can't you use the federal money for that? So that's where I left it with them, to go back. My comment was, well, if you only have a certain pot of money, don't take as much sand for Avalon, utilize some of that money to do this work. So they're, they were gonna have.
So you're waiting for an answer on that?
Yes, yes. But Craig and, and Grant thought that was an excellent idea, and they seem to think there's, you know, a significant amount of sand there that we can put it into areas that would, you know, most need it at this point. And that's all I have. It's something.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all I have on our natural resource.
Can I, are you?
There was, I was going to ask before, do we have the resolution on the regular meeting for the shared services agreement for Mantua? Or is that not happening?
No, the last, Sue was all ready to do it, and the gentleman reached back out to us and said they have all the equipment they need.
Okay.
At this point.
There was a couple of, five trash trucks caught on fire in Ocean County, and they were reaching out to various municipalities for help. And Grant was going to bring a resolution forward that Stone Harbor helped them, and.
They got help right in their area.
So I, they were able to, so, okay, they were able to, good, okay.
Which was nice, yeah, they said that overabundance of municipalities volunteer and to give them equipment, so.
Oh, okay, because I was just gonna say if that could be explained at this time, because we have time. If, okay, but no need to explain it, okay? Okay.
Jill, Jill and I met last week with Hatch McDonald and our Borough Engineer and looking toward revamping, redesigning, whatever word you want to use, the pump station, the stormwater pump.
The stormwater pump, okay.
93rd Street, so they're gonna come back to us with a, with a proposal. Basically a, like a funding proposal, so they can move forward on this. But I, so I talked to Jill this morning and we're gonna, Jill's gonna schedule a flood mitigation meeting in the near future, so the members of that committee can all get.
Be brought up to speed on what's happening, okay?
And get into agreement going forward.
Okay.
So that's, and Grant had suggested that Reese attend that meeting as well, because we're, you know, it's a discussion of sewer lines and
Okay.
sewer water lines and everything else, so.
So we'll have to cut somebody out, because we can only have three.
No, you can't come then, Reese, because I'm, I'm going. Never mind.
We could do it here, we could do it here.
Oh, that's right, I forgot you were there, that's right.
Advertise, we could do it right here.
All right, well, we'll work that out. We'll make sure Reese gets the minutes. Yeah, I'd like to attend. And the, well, I wanted you to know that, because we got it, we have to get together and talk about that, so, because we're starting like a new, a new trajectory here.
Right, okay.
Pump station.
Yeah, and I was wondering with, with the flood mitigation committee, it's been, what, a couple of months?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the other, just the other thing I wanted to discuss before we go close session is, I'm glad Marcus is here. This municipal access plan that's in here that I'm gonna introduce, I know, you know, I had trouble with the word in perpetuity. It's such two words, but you know what I mean. But it's still in there, so I guess it has to be in there, correct?
Yeah, that's their model form.
That wasn't ours.
Well, I have, I have another issue with the, with the word assign, that we can give them the easement and then they have the right to assign it to somebody?
This is all their standard language that they.
But don't you, I mean, isn't that?
Can we say we don't want to do that? Yeah, but.
I mean, well, really, what do you, I mean, you're the solicitor, what do you think about that? You're gonna give an easement.
I think that when you're dealing with them, you have an unequal bargaining situation and it's problematic.
It was probably in the, probably in the last one also.
Yep.
Those words.
Yep.
Well, they shouldn't assign the last one, whoever did. Right? It's just my thoughts, you know, I don't.
Certainly, but I think that that's the form that they want to use going.
Well, if I were them, I would want that too. Sure, give it to me and let me do what I want with it. Which is what they're saying, and we're agreeing to it.
You cannot agree to it.
You don't have to.
And that's right, so we would need to discuss what are the repercussions if we did not agree to it?
Who's gonna answer that? I'm not prepared to answer that today, but I can certainly report to you.
But we were on a timeline for this.
Correct.
Right, which is one of the repercussions.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh huh, so. I mean, I, because I agree with you, right, as far as there being concerns.
Introduced today by title, and then before second reading, we can provide you with additional information.
Yeah.
You can decide what you want to go forward with second reading.
Yeah, because one of the things you would.
Because it is just the intro, that is true.
Yeah, because one of.
And there was just recently, something was just in the paper this week, like, just over the weekend maybe, talking about, do you remember the bathroom every half mile?
Correct.
Access every quarter mile, those type things. And then there was litigation and that was dropped, but I think there's a plan to come back with that.
Right.
To have the municipalities do that.
What you have to remember is that if it is assigned, it's assigned only under the same terms and conditions of what you're permitting. So no one would gain any greater right to do anything with the property than what you are permitting.
Right. Which is basically to walk on it to get to the beach or to fish over the bulkhead.
How many years does this last? Five, was it the last one? Perpetuity generally means perpetuity.
Well, no, I mean, we just updated it.
No, this plan was, was adopted by council.
I remember it.
I would say, when I got here, I think you were just finishing it up, we were actually the first one to submit it to the state. Then they had questions and going back and forth and here we are, almost seven years later.
So it's not a plan that you adopt and then you revisit every seven years and, or anything like that? It's just, it's the plan?
Correct.
So why then do we have to make changes to the plan now? Is it something that
They've been review, they've still been reviewing it and as they made recommendations for the adjustments, Stockton would go in and make those
They're still reviewing the initial plan that we submitted that many years ago. So now they're saying, we're looking at your plan and we want you to add this.
They're like saying, right, they're saying, everything else is okay, this was the only thing that was missing. You file this document with it, you're good to go.
Sue, don't you remember this, a long time ago?
A long time ago.
I do too.
Yeah.
I remember in the eighties and nineties.
I mean, this is, this is something that, that Stu Farrow was authorized by council before I got here to prepare.
Yeah, I just remember
Yeah, because I do remember that happening.
And I remember them saying that we were the first one to actually submit for it, but Avalon was the first one to get theirs approved.
But then when did they file their litigation then? Was that, because I thought all that was happening at once.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure how that
And I can remember working with Kenny Hawk on this.
I'll look back and see when
Now, that could be a complete senior moment, I disclosed
Or it could have been something very similar, but
I just remember the municipal access plan, in fact, I thought I had an old, old, old copy of it.
Could be.
Yeah.
Well, there is some comfort in the fact that it's the introduction, so we do have time to look and get people more comfortable with it or anything.
Should we introduce it tonight?
We, if we don't introduce it tonight, correct me if I'm wrong, we need to introduce it tonight. Or what, what's the repercussions?
Then they're going to say, it's, they're denying it and you have to start from scratch.
They're denying what?
Denying approval of the plan.
Of the original seven-year-old plan.
Correct.
And then they can put more stringent requirements on the next plan that we
Correct.
I don't think they'd be